I'm going to convene this meeting. Will you turn it on?
Your honor.
Okay. This is the August 3 meeting of the Bonnstable County Commissioners and I'm convening at this time. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence. There are many things that have happened recently, not the least of which is the poor child that had been drowned up in the middle of New Hampshire. But also keep in mind our servicemen who are still representing us overseas and are going to part ways with us. Thank you very much. At this time, when you open it up to public comment, our policy on public comment is that we will not offer discussion, but we will allow three minutes per person. Is there anybody for public comment? Here?
Mr. Chairman. My name is Preston Riddick. I'm from McLaughlin, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. As you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the public have been appearing before the Commissioners -- appearing before the Commissioners for, I think, 14 or 15 consecutive weeks. For most of those weeks, we've been asking for two items to appear upon the agenda of the County Commissioners. Today, I note that for the first time, you actually at 9:35 have set time aside for discussion on the resolutions submitted by Save Our Seashore with regard to CIVAC and Cape Light Compact. And I congratulate you for finally putting that on the agenda. What I'm astounded by frankly is the line that comes right after that where it says, "Please note there will be no public discussion." And I asked Commissioners Flynn and Lyons, you said, both of you, once we began this odyssey and we presented the petitions, or Mr. Riddler did, that within one or two weeks that you would have a discussion on these topics. And now, months have gone by, there's been no discussion, no opportunity to discuss it, because the Chairman, who is also Chairman of Cape Light Compact, will not allow, or has not allowed, as he has set the agenda, these items to be on the agenda. So I guess I'm asking both Commissioners Flynn and Lyons to take a vote, if that's procedurally correct, I assume it is, to override the Chairman and say, "Look, we've been coming, you know, I have a lot of things to do with my life, I know Mr. Rogers does. We could fill this room up five times over with people if they thought they could come and speak on these issues, but of course they have to work, so I can't come during the day." So after so many months of pleading with you to at least let us discuss these and have a dialogue and ask questions, now that this finally appears on the agenda, we're told that we can't stand and speak to the issue. So, A, I'm astounded by that, the lack of, again, transparency, accountability, and openness that this has represented this last four or five months. And one final time, I make a plea with the two Commissioners, who are very fair-minded people and wonderful people, Commissioners Flynn and Lyons, to please override the Chairman and allow us to speak to this issue. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other public comment? Hearing then, we'll move on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the discussion with Bob Troy, County Council, on resolutions submitted by Save Our Seashore with regard to CIVAC and Cape Light Compact. There will be no public discussion. Do you have any comments on that?
No, the only comment, I think that the resolutions are properly before the County Commission and that you may entertain them and discuss them amongst yourselves, and I recommend that you take a vote, then either adopt them or decline to adopt them.
And then, at this point, in order to put it on the table, is there an inclination to have a motion to either approve or disapprove the acceptance of the resolutions?
I would like, if I may, to discuss each resolution, and if I could have a copy, I thought I'd --
Excuse me. Before we can discuss it, we have to put it on the table. Rather than put it on the table, it must be a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion to put the resolution on the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with the discussion.
If I may. Okay, thank you. Pat, if you want to go.
No, you go ahead.
No, I have nothing to say right now, I want to take a look at these because -- but I just wanted to say that I think that if we are going to take a vote, I'm not sure if that, you know, I think that we're in legal standing and Bob can take note of this but -- and speak to this, but as it's stated, to have no comments, no public comment and discussion, I think is fine, but if we're going to make a motion to take a vote, then I think that we have to allow some public discussion here. And it is a petition by those in the room here, and if they, if there is a question, I think it's, you know, we can see how this discussion goes, but I think it's probably prudent to address those questions and put them to rest at the time. If that comes to be. But right now, I am happy to discuss these resolutions amongst ourselves and see what we think of them. That's my only comment.
Yeah.
Well, just in thinking about the issue of public discussion or not public discussion, I think we've had a lot of discussion. We haven't had a lot, well, we have had some discussion. I recall one day, we had an hour's discussion about some of these issues, and more than that. Now, obviously, those discussions never came to any resolution, because as we move forward on these issues, we realize that they are somewhat complex. And, well, I shouldn't say they're complex, but I don't think they're necessarily that complex. I think when we look at how CIVAC and the Compact were structured, I think they were structured appropriately. And we have had conversations with our council, Bob Troy, we've had conversations with Council for CIVAC and the Compact, and I think, I think we've had a lot of comment on the issues related to the Compact and CIVAC. I think we have a pretty good understanding of where the public is on these issues, some of the public, at least Mr. Riddick and Mr. Rogers and others who have come here. And as they say, they have been here week after week after week, looking for us to respond in some way to what they would like to see us do. And I'm not sure that that's really appropriate to do that. Based on all the information we have as County Commissioners on these organizations, our role, as it may or may not be defined, but clearly, the purpose of CIVAC and the purpose of the Compact are being carried out appropriately, in my judgment, based on everything I have heard. So in reading the resolutions, if you want to discuss them, that's fine, but the resolutions are not, they're the resolutions that ask that we take certain actions. And I'm opposed to that. I think that if there were any actions that we should take, we should deliver what those actions should be. But I don't see anything in the resolutions that would cause me to want to take the actions that are being proposed. So, that's my part of the discussion. Well, I just feel that these resolutions speak to the fact that there's been a lack of some communication or information that's been requested. So this has been an effort to push that. As far as being able to answer the questions that the public has had, I have asked for a meeting, a forum, where CLC, CIVAC, actually discussed its organization, how it was organized, how CIVAC came to be from that. I think it's a very straightforward discussion. I don't think that there's anything anyone has to hide here. And I think that this is a frustrated effort to get to those answers. And I think that if we just had those answers, we said that we were going to do it here in this office, we decided not to. A lot of that discussion did happen in executive session and top of other items that were covered. I do know that there's statutory exemptions for executive session material that CLC has under the same guise as a utility. So I understand some of these restrictions or their right to do this, but I think overall, the general plan, the general organization, the general way things work is very straightforward, and by holding back information, it puts questions in the minds of people that aren't satisfied, and they can, you know, morph into other questions. So I think if we were just direct and answered and gave information that people are looking for, we could put this behind us and then deal with things that we have to deal with as ourselves. I hear what you're saying, but I think the organizations, the questions are being asked of the Compact and they're being asked of CIVAC, but we're the ones who are being asked to provide it. I think the Compact and CIVAC should respond to the questions.
I agree.
They're not us. These agencies are formed with their own boards of directors, and it seems to me that they are the ones who should be responding to the questions, these for instance, about transfers of funds, about us instructing our representatives in terms of how to vote. The idea is, when you appoint someone to represent you, that's what they do, they represent you, you don't tell them how to vote. If you find that they may be, in other words, if there's established policy and that they're required to obviously adhere to policy, but you don't tell your representatives how to vote on things. That's why they're there. If you wanted to have to vote in a specific way, you would be your own representative.
And I agree with it, if I may.
I don't want to go too deep into all of that.
But I know that, you know, when I was on the Cape Cod Commission, it was an issue that I didn't report back enough, that you felt that you didn't know exactly what was going on. I do think that there is, should be discussion between us and our representatives, whoever, you, you, myself, on any of these boards, and the representatives that we appoint. So yes, I do think that there should be discussion. Do we instruct them? I think that we would like votes to reflect policies that we strongly endorse, such as openness, transparency, local control. However, I do, and I agree with you, these are questions for CLC and CIVAC, and what they're asking is that we ask them to give this information. We have asked that.
Yes, we have asked. So because we have asked, and because I've answered and said that the contention is in September to have such a forum, and indeed, we've made the same offer to the Assembly of Delegates to have Maggie and Mark over there and respond to questions, I believe that that has been offered over several months. But because we, because the question that they put to us, as I understand it, was to vote these up or down, I think this is your opportunity to do that. So my suggestion is that since we have already taken those steps to ask the organizations that are responsible for, let's say, you know, that are responsible for doing these things, and they have responded by saying that they would, and there's been no indication that they would not, or they would be resistant to it, then I think that the question you've been asked is to support and not support those resolutions. Over public comment over several months, as they've indicated, they've asked for some action with regard to those resolutions. This is your opportunity to accept or reject them at this time. So I would ask you to, you know, to look at it and decide whether it was your pleasure.
Well, could I just give a comment? That Mr. Riddler had the opportunity to present these to us several weeks ago. So he outlined these to us in detail in his presentation.
Yes, he did.
So it's not like we haven't heard from the presenter of the resolutions.
All right. So at this point, I think that, I think we should be prepared to take a vote, but I would ask, Bob, listening to this discussion, are we within the bounds of what we can do with regard to this? Because my understanding is that the first rule for any type of a body, whether it be legislative or executive, is that they can only act on matters that are within their jurisdiction for deliberation.
Thank you.
And since these are asking for actions that are outside of our authority, then I would say that we have done what we could with regard to notifying those agencies that can be responsive to the questions that have been asked, and they have responded in a positive way and a willingness to do that. And I believe that although a date certainly has not been set, it is, you know, it is in process.
And I think the answer to that, Mr. Chairman, is that if you feel that the resolutions are outside the scope of jurisdiction of the county, that would be a reason which you could advance to support a motion to not endorse, but to decline to vote for the resolutions. I mean, that goes to the substance of the resolutions, and I think that the rules of the game are this, the body, the public body, has the authority to entertain resolutions to the extent it decides to do so. It's not required to do so, it's discretionary authority. You have placed these resolutions on the agenda, therefore, it is appropriate because you've exercised that discretionary authority to take a vote. You can either vote to endorse the resolutions, or you can vote to decline to endorse the resolutions. And obviously, the substantive reasons go to which way you're going to vote. If you feel it's outside of the jurisdiction of the County Commissioners, and it is within the jurisdiction of separately constituted entities, then that informs your vote. If you feel, on the other hand, that the county should take a position with respect to sending a signal to other agencies, then you can do that too. So I think that it's before you, and that it's up to you as County Commissioners to decide whether you want to endorse them or decline to endorse them.
Okay. So at this point, the resolutions are before us, and I believe that you could take a vote as to whether you choose to accept or reject.
I think we need some more discussion.
I just want to say too, I think oftentimes we, not oftentimes, but occasionally, we have voted on resolutions that are not within our jurisdiction in the sense of, we're supporting state of law bill, or we support NSTAR, not spraying pesticides. I mean, we have no control over NSTAR, obviously, but we vote to support resolutions like that. This, I think, is, I find this different, because they are agencies that were actually, we don't have authority, they're not under our jurisdiction, so to speak. But I think that the actions that we're being asked to take by some of these resolutions are not appropriate. For instance, the first one has to deal with the Town of Brewster. And it's not to us to tell the Town of Brewster how to do its business in, or how to run its town, so to speak. And I think the others are the same. I think because the substance of them really relate to actions of other organizations that have a relationship to the county, but not come under the jurisdiction of the County Commissioners.
Well, I must agree, because I see a parallel, for example, that we have representatives, there are representatives of the Steamship Authority, but a representative of the Steamship Authority cannot control the activities of the Steamship Authority. We have members on CIVAC and on the Cape Light Compact. The special relationship on the Cape Light Compact is that since it is under the aegis of an intergovernmental agreement, which gives the main authority to the towns that are, you know, that are members, and that our vote and our relationship is based upon a, what's it, I don't even understand, but an administrative services agreement, that indeed, they are maintaining the authority and sovereignty of the towns that have signed into the intergovernmental agreement with regard to Cape Light Compact. With regard to CIVAC, since we have a member on that board, and I believe the Chair of CIVAC is in the room, we do not have anything over control, that is, a separately incorporated, I don't know, not under audit incorporation. The point to me is that we've asked, we've asked a question with regard to acting, I don't believe, I don't intend to vote for these resolutions, because I don't think that they're appropriate. And I guess at this point, we have to decide whether we want to vote for it as well.
Well, I think, no, I think what the actions that are being asked, the actions that are being requested that we are being resolved to do, are really actions that should be taken by other organizations. One is the Town of Brewster, one is CIVAC, one is the Compact. So I think the actions that are being requested here should more appropriately be acted upon by those organizations than by us. And just to make another further comment, is that I noticed in your agenda, you said there would not be any public discussion. And normally, public discussion is when the Commissioners or any governmental body is looking for more information. I think we have more than sufficient information on this to be a public discussion, and so therefore, I think there would be no public discussion. So I would make a motion.
Shame on you!
If I may.
There is a motion on the floor, and now it's time to vote.
No, there is a motion on the floor.
Yes, there is, she made a motion.
I made a motion that we would be discussing these, not to vote.
Not to vote.
Oh, okay.
You're in discussion.
We are in discussion.
And you can, I would make a motion that we do not endorse these resolutions.
Is there a second?
Because I -- I am still, okay, I still, I still would like to just say a couple of things.
Okay. All right, then I'll withdraw my motion.
This is all within the understanding that Cape Light Compact is a department of ours. We have it listed as a department. In that website, it states that Bonnstable County has oversight and fiscal, has fiscal oversight of the funds. And those are the administrative funds. These things can be very easily explained. There's nothing to hide here. I think that if we had a discussion, we're very transparent. We as elected officials are not to sit here and judge the merits of certain projects. As far as going to DPU, I have stated to people, if it's part of the process, I'm not, I'm not going to stand in the way in the process, just as I believed that the process was for, like, the Cape Cod standards to go before the Assembly, that was a process that was in place that should be followed. It's open, it's public, it's transparent. We are there to uphold and to guard the transparency of the public. These are public funds, and that is our job. And our job is to also answer questions that people have about public monies and how they're being spent. However, I think what we have to resolve is that if these agreements that we have entered into have given the wrong impression, then that's the onus, is maybe we should correct these things. These are things that we have to look at internally. Given that, I think that this has dragged on way too long. I think it's unfortunate that CLC and CIVAC waited until September to have this forum and address these, they're waiting until September, I think it would have been very helpful for us, so that we could move on. There are a lot of issues that we have to be addressing, including structures of this, and to delve into this. And so my recommendation is that these, this information is explained and put to rest sooner than later, so that we can go on, we can take a look at, if we're entering into these types of agreements, and there is really no benefit to us, we have no control, we are funding, if we have no control over these organizations and yet we're somehow affiliated with them.
Which one are you talking about funding?
CLC.
Right.
If we have no authority over this, then I think that's the discussion we have to have, is, is it in our interest to be having these under our jurisdiction now?
I believe the appropriate place to have that discussion is during the budget process. And during the budget process, I believe it's appropriate for them to --
I agree, and I think that we could even do it even before the budget process, so that we're not using the last few minutes to do this. I think these are things that we have to look at as we go forward. Having said that, whether we have it now or next week, that's fine, but there are simple questions.
Well, I think that's a --
There are simple questions to be answered. It is our job to uphold transparency.
Right now, we have resolutions before.
I understand what the resolutions, and I know that you want to have a vote on these, but --
But you're, if we're sticking with the substance of the --
What she's saying is that even though we may choose not to endorse these resolutions, it doesn't mean that the issues are not real, that the public is raised.
Right.
And those issues do need to be addressed by the Compact and by CIVAC, and by us, in the sense that we all are on the same page and we all understand, we know, we know why people are asking these questions. I mean, obviously, they're asking them, but they have a reason for asking them. And I think we all need to know, what is the purpose of all of this? You know, where are we going with this information? But I think if our motion, or I'm going to make a motion that we decline to endorse the resolution, but that we ask CIVAC and the Compact to look at these, at least in terms of what's being requested, and see if they can provide a certain amount of information that would address the questions from the public, and that it doesn't in any way take away from the, from the issues that have been raised and are needed to at least address them.
May I just --
So my motion, Mr. Chairman, is to decline to endorse the resolution.
Is there a second to that?
I will second that, but with the caveat that I agree with Pat. It doesn't mean that we disagree with these or that they're not legitimate questions. They're not questions for us to answer. I strongly, I will put an add-on that we encourage these organizations to address these issues and come forward with whatever information, without some sort of frustration of, you know, there's so much money. When the public asks for information, it's their right to have the information.
Now, since the Town of Brewster is included in these resolutions, are you also suggesting that we --
I have no, I have no authority over those Town of Brewster.
So just all understand, the caveat is for the Cape Light Compact to enforce CIVAC.
That's what I'm addressing. The Town of Brewster, I think, understands their issues. If everything is, and I know it is, if all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, come forward with what's going on and what their desire is. I think everybody knows what their desire is. I cannot stop, you know, I'm not going to stand in the way of Brewster pursuing a project that would be what they have deemed a benefit to their community. So as far as them following whatever processes before them, whether it's DPU, do I, do I think that's a great idea? You know, I like, I think to keep local control is a good thing. We endorse that, we fight for that, and yet here, they're going beyond that. But that's their decision. That was what their vote was. So I cannot speak to that. I am strongly recommending that these be addressed.
So with regard to the Cape Light Compact and the CIVAC, and the fact that you have sent a letter to CIVAC asking them for a forum, and it's my understanding that there is in process an action where Mark and Maggie are intending to appear before the Assembly to, let's see, to address all of these things, that perhaps that would be a method or path to resolve some of these questions.
I think that's a very public forum and inappropriate place for these discussions.
Sheila, front man, can I just restate the resolution? Would you want a short? Pat moved to decline endorsing the resolutions. It was seconded by Sheila, and it was asked, I'm not sure if this is part of your vote or not, it was asked that CIVAC and CLC address the questions raised in the resolution.
Yes, that was part of the --
That's part of the motion. So then I would say the motion is moved to decline to endorse the resolutions as submitted by Save Our Seashore, but requested that CIVAC and CLC address the questions raised in the resolution, moved by Pat, seconded by Sheila. So they have a motion in front of them.
Okay. And I was just going to ask if I could suspend the rules for a minute, because Mr. McLaughlin is in the audience, and he is President of CIVAC, and I was wondering if there is any timetable on when you're going to have this forum, or your thoughts are on this.
Well, wait a minute, before we open it up, we can't open up the one that's opening up the wall, so I'm very concerned about that. I think that as far as finding out when this is, I believe what we have gotten correspondence is that it would be in September.
I think there's a difference between public discussion and if one of the Commissioners wants to direct an inquiry to a person.
As long as it doesn't open up the floor.
Thank you.
I think they're two different.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty, and then it was the Commissioner. The short answer is we welcome an opportunity to be before the Assembly, and believe they're discussing that this afternoon in the form of a resolution. We hope we'll set the tone of that -- We hope will set the tone of that meeting. There are two resolutions there. One is perhaps more accusatory than inquisitive, but we'll have our say as to the appropriate nature of that inquiry, and it's, we'd welcome that opportunity. I'll just say on a personal note, and I've said it publicly before, the utility industry has an imprimatur from the legislature to conduct so much of its business in private, and I think it's unfortunate. Most bidders don't have that opportunity once the bids are out and once negotiations are ongoing. And we have a very difficult job weighing these energy bids. On the one hand, trying to encourage maximum participation by the particular energy providers, whether it be gas or electricity or solar or other, or wind, and encouraging as many bidders as possible to come to the table. And yet because of the industry's mode of operation, as blessed by the legislature, the idea that we would not be signing confidentiality agreements with them at the onset of this would discourage participation. And when all is said and done, our default position needs to be to give the best possible price for, for our towns and for our populace. It's frustrating to me. I grew up admiring openness, and there's an awful lot of business that because of this imprimatur needs to be conducted in private if you're going to serve your customers with the best possible prices. And that's the way business is. And I'll say that again to the Assembly when we get there. So I share some of the frustration. I would like to see more open discussion, but we are terribly constrained, and it's just the way business is done. So I think the ultimate question then needs to be posed to the legislature, not to us. With that said, we're looking forward to a chance to clear the air on a host of subjects to the extent that we can and address these issues. Certainly on the DPU issues, I'm convinced that there'll be a, should we go in that direction, that there will be a full opportunity for all the parties to present their very best evidence, particularly on Brewster, obviously, that's what's kind of depending up there, and to provide their best evidence, subject to, finally, to cross-examination to find out whether there are legitimate issues associated with it. It's also, I think, significant that in the papers in the last three days, the administration is undertaking investigations in some of these subjects. Just with the delays we anticipate at DPU, I think the state investigation in some of these issues will be finished in public before, or at least commensurate with, co-terminists perhaps, with the end of the DPU proceedings or any appeals from the DPU proceedings. And we're not mindful of that. We want the best possible project. And we point to Hull, and we point to Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and others as evidence that these projects can be done successfully. And if there are reasonable suggestions from the other side that we can accommodate, we will. So this is not a steamroller. This is an attempt to try and do the very best we can with sound science and not scare tactics. So at the end of the day, we'll see what the evidence is, and we'll see how this turns out. But to your, to your point, coming back to the Assembly, I think it's a great place to investigate that thoroughly and let as much light shine on this as we can.
If I may, you know, Charlie, a lot of the public's comments, questions have been, a lot of things have happened in executive session. What gives you the right to have these executive sessions for so long? This sort of thing. If there's statutory exemptions, if there are laws that guide you and allow you to do these things, those are the, those are the simple answers that can clarify those questions. They can satisfy those questions in public. And I, you may feel that they won't be satisfied, and maybe they won't be, but if they're legitimate and they're honest, at least they've been addressed. So because you think they're not going to believe them, does it mean that you don't give the answer?
But I would counter the suggestion that we are keeping anything secret, that we're not obliged to keep secret. And the suggestion is that because they remain undisclosed to the public for lengthy periods of time is that we're hiding something. That isn't the case. We recognize fully our obligation to release Executive Committee minutes as soon as the reason for keeping those matters undisclosed and evaporated. And that is up on CIVAC's website. We continue to post, we continue to review. We just went through the same thing, as you know, in Associate Counsel in Bonestive. We just went through years of minutes that not, that should have been released years ago. Everyone's acutely aware of that. The Cape Cod Times has done a good job, and then Local Patriot has done a good job in pointing out the fallacy of that practice and, or ignoring it, if you will, not by intention but by neglect. So we're acutely aware of our obligation to release those. We are doing that, but there's an awful lot of material that is, we're only four years old, not quite four years old. There's an awful lot of material that has been discussed and explored and opportunities that are still open questions for us as to whether or not we engage in it. Until those are resolved one way or the other, there's no opportunity to release those minutes. So we're looking at them in good faith and very acutely aware of our obligation to do so.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
Thank you.
Yeah. Motion. Yeah. Yeah.
Ready for a vote? I'll call for a vote.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Carry the unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I believe that the next item on the agenda is the update on the Special Committee on Governance from the Senators of Robyn, Larry, and Henri Mushenbach. Alvin, please come forward.
Morning.
Hello. Good morning.
Morning.
It's like stadium seating here.
Stadium seating, right. Top seats.
Well, this is close, a little close to Comfort.
We don't have much room on this side either.
Too close, and the headlights...
Well, they're not shining at us.
Yeah. But you get any...
You've had all that, right?
Indeed.
Enough of that. Well, thank you very much for having us, and we have been getting together on a couple of occasions and sort of roughing this out and looked at your charge again, and I think we're, we're ready to go. We've put together, Henri can talk to it, but we've put together a tentative list. We've begun to contact some of these people and find out whether they're willing to serve. And I've been getting, I've been getting a favorable response. We divided it in half. And we will probably have it firmly in place within a couple of days, I would think.
I think so. We have 25 names identified, and 15 have accepted.
Oh, wonderful.
We've got a schedule which, we would meet after Labor Day, probably mid-September. Before Labor Day, we would expect to sit down with maybe Maggie and Mark and develop sort of a database of documents, prior studies, whatever is in the archives of the county, you know, that would then serve as the common underpinnings of what's happened in the past and any other relevant materials that we would, that we would look for, whether it be at the state level or, you know, other jurisdictions. And use that as a binder for our first meeting. Our first meeting in September, we would look to review our charge and discuss how we're going to proceed going forward. We would anticipate having three meetings regionally on the Cape that would deal with sort of the function of the county, and then what the future of the county would be, other kinds of services, et cetera. You know, maybe look at revenues as an issue. Where does that go? Are there opportunities for the county to grow, et cetera, on that side? Not the T-word, but, you know. And then the third would be perhaps governance. So that would let our committee decide what...
That would, that would quibble with...
No, I mean, from a scheduling point of view, it would be the first, the third, or whatever. So there would be those three. Then we would come back and meet in November. We'd do those October, early November, would come back and have a meeting, hopefully before Thanksgiving, if that's not too difficult, or right after it, and have drafts, sort of recommendations, and then come back in December, several weeks later, with, to agree on a report, a document, which we would then transmit to the Assembly and to yourselves. So we do it as...
Very ambitious.
Yep.
Aggressive.
Timing is just about right.
Just about right.
Start into the budget in January, right?
Okay. All right, good. All right, so that's, and we looked at the charge, and we're pretty comfortable with it. That's fairly straightforward.
I have two questions. We have a, our assessment, our internal assessment...
It's coming, in a couple of days, yes.
Good. So once we have a chance to look at that, I'm sure that's going to be maybe a helpful document for you.
Yeah, so that could go into the...
That can go into the...
Into the packet.
Yes, we'll have that all sort of discussed. And also, I was talking to a friend of mine who's an alum of Harvard Law School, and he, we were just sort of talking about what this was, and there is a professor there who teaches municipal law. And he said, you know, it might be interesting if you wanted an intern to come from, so if you're interested in that type of, maybe a student intern from law school to look things up for you, you know, to be of assistance?
Yeah, functionally, depending on the schedule of an intern, that might not be bad. I mean, I do believe that it's, that we could make legislative, make recommendations. It might have a legislative impact, et cetera.
Right. Well, and you're, you know, experienced with that already, so I'm not suggesting otherwise. But I'm just saying, if you're interested, I mean, I could just see, they might not have any...
Sure. The other thing is, we're really drawing on people who have, a lot of people from the past, who have experience with the county, kind of know a lot already and have observed, and so that, you know, we're drawing on that, that experience, to sort of look at where we are today.
Can we ready to submit your, your membership list?
Yeah, we have a list.
Well, we have a list, but we haven't, we've contacted everybody.
You've got to get a little...
So within the next day or two, we'll email this down.
Great. And then when we get there...
You'll recognize, you know, but that's our...
It's most, we're thinking about calling it the former commission. Everybody around there is former.
Re-engaged, maybe future.
Former this year.
There's a, there's a constant refrain that I hear as I go around the Cape about regionalization. And one of the things I hear is that one of the major stumbling blocks to any regionalization effort of towns themselves, you know, they just simply can't grasp the idea that, that services can be, that service levels can be achieved outside the town boundaries. So I just thought that that was something you could keep in the front of your mind as you go through...
Well, I've been around since 1630, so, you know...
Nothing new.
Nothing new.
But it continues to be...
I'm not sure we're going to resolve that.
It's Adam's fault, and we both are constitutionally...
We have Bud Dunham, who's agreed to serve, and Charlie Sumner's agreed to serve.
Who was Sheila?
Bud Dunham and Charlie Sumner, two town managers.
Oh, that's great.
We're looking at Bob Lot and the...
They're chasing Bob Lot.
We need to get in your boat. That's...
So...
Bob Lot, what time?
Because he's...
That's really...
If you, if you look at the pressure, the economics of town government, I mean, you do have the regionalization of Harwich and Chatham schools. It's new, you know, very different, long time coming. And we've seen efforts and thoughts that perhaps, you know, police fire on the outer Cape, which you've seen and observed, and, you know, come close, et cetera. So I think we will look at that, but we'll also look at, well, as what's happening at the state level, because that is a picture that's not going to improve as, you know, the national economy may not improve that quickly. And resources with the pressure of health and pensions and, you know, Pat McGovern's old budget busters, these pressures are going to continue on regardless of the reforms that have recently happened with municipal health. So, you know, we think that it's a worthy effort to make to sit down with the state and say, are there things that the county regionally could provide to assist, whether it be, you know, on the environmental enforcement side or, you know, health, et cetera? So we would look to, for the future part of this to explore that kind of, those thoughts as well. And I think we'd look to draw on bringing some folks down from the state if they're willing to have a discussion. Are there things that we can do regionally out here since we are a region that's compact and well put together, and we've got a structure that can embrace some of these, some new kinds of functions?
So maybe there are some legislative actions that might be necessary to put this together to make it function as a...
If you're going to do something significant, I suspect you're going to land up in front of the legislature. But if there's a general consensus in the region, I mean, we both have experience with this, and I think there is a tendency to think if you send it, if you send a request up to Boston, it's dead on arrival, but that's not the case. If you, if there is some relative consensus about a direction you want to go, and there'll be a willingness to listen to it, if it's reasonable, it's well thought through, and there's not necessarily universal agreement, there never is, but if there's general agreement, then it can happen.
And part of the, part of the thought, if it's like, well, that's a condensed, you know, sort of a process, in reality, the legislature, the first year of their two-year session will go out in November, they'll come back in January. And part of our thoughts are that if, you know, you can't predetermine what we'd wind up with, but if we wound up with an action that would, you know, maybe require legislation or recommend a legislative, well, then, you know, January would be an operative time to file something if indeed we wind up with something that suggests that, and we can't predetermine what the committee is going to do or not.
If the timing works.
But the timing is built around the thought that we'd like to be able to capture that, you know, if the recommendations are sound, and if there's some action that would require legislation as opposed to sitting around, you know, and waiting for the beginning of the next legislative session.
There are two things. I'm in contact with the representatives of Franklin County Government and Hampshire County. They, they served on a committee that I am on at Mass Municipal, on regional administrative affairs, and that they are hampered by the fact that they must go up and solicit business, if you will, in order to maintain their existence. And that seems to be, you know, a sticking point, as we got to our group of towns, because those towns are very small and they are very scattered as far as what they're representing. We have towns with resources. However, we've had some success recently with the town of Welley, for example, which is, we've been supporting with inspectional services. And the apparent attitude that's made that successful is a willingness on the part of management, supported by elected representatives, to outsource things that have been identified that are not either mission-sensitive or contributory. So I wonder, in your conversation with these three, as to whether or not, because I know that Bob Lot had written up a significantly detailed study, a summary, of those things that were thought to be appropriate for, let's say, for regionalizing some towns. Perhaps we could follow that.
I mean, I think a lot of the, a lot of thrusts to the regionalization to Canada was mostly focused on the outer Cape because you have small towns, you know, the boards of health and that kind of stuff, and inspections, and the county's been hopeful there. The trick has been, what do you do with the larger towns that, you know, populate the mid and the upper Cape? And, you know, what's functional there? And when you sit back and you look at what's coming at this county, and Rob and I were talking about this, you know, earlier, you know, you've got a lot of large structural, infrastructure-related kinds of things that this, you know, the county's on the precipice of embracing or dealing with environmentally or driven, and what's the county's role in all of that? And does that then bring these large towns closer together? Is there a way to bind that? Is that regional or not? So, you know, I mean, we, the outer Cape, I think, is easy to talk about, you know, police fire schools. The mid and upper Cape, that's a lot tougher, so, you know, but we'll, we'll spend time on that.
And there's one other thing that's very important to me. We have been providing regional services on a regular basis for a long period of time. You're, you're aware of it, and I know some of them that you've introduced, you know, like the Cape Light Compact, and we've both had a very important part of it. And the Cape Cod Commission, which is, you know, which is another regional regulatory planning department, you know, for all of the county, that I think can provide a way of, I would say, of demonstrating that we do have the ability to deliver regional services because we have a track record with that. And I hope that as we, as we look at the regional services piece, and we don't lose sight of the contribution that we've already made, that we want to maintain, and perhaps one of the more important questions is, is to whether or not there's not only recognition... of the more important questions is to whether or not there's not only recognition, but there's also, let's say, considered consideration of value of what we've been doing. Because that's a question that I've always asked when, you know, when we've talked about these services, when we've visited the towns. We provide these services. Are there any that, you know, are not useful to you? And I've never got a negative answer. So the question comes, is the perceived value a real value?
What, when you talk about the Franklin County Council of Governments, it's such a whole different animal. I mean, they're really more like purchasing agents, right? They submit bids or towns submit bids and they provide services. And we're looking, I think, at a different model. But maybe there might be some pieces to that that might work for some of the towns. You can't rule it out entirely. But that does... We wouldn't consider that to be the major structure of what it...
Right, I don't think that's...
No, that's not in your... Because it's not really a functional regional government. It really is like an administrative...
It's like a purchasing...
It's like the back office going around saying, we can do this for you cheaper.
As we roll out with our committees, what our meetings, I don't know if we want to call them hearings, but what our meetings would be about, we would, I think, seek input for folks that have a perspective that are innovative and creative, whether it be Franklin's or, you know, someplace else that would, you know, come and engage in the dialogue.
Right.
We have several towns, you know, administrators, and they are in the outer Capes. That's probably why they embrace this. But, you know, Sheila Van der Hoff, you know, grew up in a viable county, you know, really, you know, Cooks County. Paul Seelof, town, the TA at Wellfleet, comes from Albany, you know, and he worked in the county government there. So that's why he's so willing to give off these things, because this has just added weight to him. And he sees that they're not part of the, you know, as Bill would say, the overall mission or character of that town. So he's always looking for ways to say, you know, can you do this? So, I mean, they're not bad to people to have consults, consultation with on those ideas.
We have members of the legal and voters in the room. And I would say that it is important for that kind of organization to make sure that the public is aware that these meetings are going on. The problem in the past, when I've sat through charter reviews and things of that sort, is that the usual suspects show up. And you don't really see people that, while they're interested in outcomes, they're not interested in participating. So somehow or other, we have to have the same level of interest and participation as people have in outcomes. It's, you know, the idea of getting everybody in the same room so we get an answer that we can, you know, that we can count on getting community support at the end of it.
Well, Rob has a PR budget.
That's very generous of you.
You know, we would hope they'd be interested. And our group, I think, will be diversified.
That's always a challenge.
We'll bring in situates out some.
But in the end, you know, our feeling is there has to be a confidence in regional government if there's going to be a future in terms of the challenges that the Cape is faced with. And so that, you know, we need to revisit that and look at the way we're organized and how we can better do that.
And the other piece to that, too, is with open Cape, is the strategic information of, you know, how we can actually create a database that will be valuable and useful to all of the towns. And not just for water and wastewater, but it could be for a lot of... Well, we know assessing is one, but it could be for a lot of other things as well.
We've asked Bert if he would serve on this, and he said he would, so I couldn't have that much of a respect.
Good, excellent.
All right, thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Our next stop will be with you.
Yeah, at some point. We'll put together a packet.
I also want to make sure that we have the public notices, somebody to take your minutes.
Right, we'll have to go.
Okay, no fouls.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, thank you for having us.
Enjoy.
All right.
Thank you.
That would be a blow.
We have a couple of minutes before the time says we're closing.
Do you all have copies for going to the...
No.
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, there's a staff member here, and it looks like these...
Are you eager to...
No, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have on some of the other stuff that's on the...
Oh, on the agenda, okay.
You can call me the next time you have to call about the path.
Do you have copies for the CME?
Yeah, I tried to, but I was...
I have copies for everybody, right here.
Mr. Chairman, a technical question. I'm going to have a Cape change in about a half an hour. Do you think that we should make that change now? Or do you think we should include the meeting in a half an hour?
Oh, it was just received from him.
Why don't we make that change now?
No, I don't think you can. Okay.
We're back. Okay, we're back. And the item on the agenda, the discussion, the communication received from Sheriff James Cummings regarding CME charges. And I would defer to the lead... To the leading of this discussion to Pat, because you've been our point person.
Well, we received a letter on July 26th, which was last week, from the sheriff, indicating that with regard to CME, which is the Coordinated Medical Emergency Dispatch, is that beginning in October... Beginning on October 1st, that he would not have sufficient funds to continue to provide the CME service to the towns. So therefore, what he is... What he stated is that going forward... He did receive the $100,000 from the state. The Senate President worked with the Speaker and the Governor to have $100,000 added to the outside section of the budget for... Specifically for the sheriff to add to his funding for CME. And that funding is available to him. But he doesn't feel that's enough because the numbers he gave us from 2010 are $457,816 to operate the CME service. So he has now determined that he is going to require fees from the hospital, which would be $6.53 for any receiving hospital, you pay $6.53 per ambulance. And the ambulance provider, which I am assuming is the town, because the towns have their own ambulances. I don't think any town on the Cape actually contracts with AMS or any of the other private ambulance services. I think each of the towns have their own ambulances that they provide. And there would be an additional or another separate fee of $6.53 to the towns. Well, obviously, the towns do not have an appropriation for paying for this service. In this fiscal year, all the budgets are done, they're all... It took a great deal just to even put together a budget to operate the towns in many respects. And a lot of services have been reduced, employees have been laid off and all of that. So the towns, at least through the remainder of this fiscal year, have no appropriation. The only option would be to go to town meeting and get an approval for this if that were the case. And we don't even know if towns have that availability of funds to even appropriate. So I spoke with, well, the Senate President's... I spoke with the Senate President's office because they are... She is the one who actually became very engaged in this process some time back. And also received this letter from the sheriff and responded. She responded to the towns that are in her district. And she said that CME... She described a CME concept. And in the past, the towns and the hospitals have not been required to financially assist with the cost of CME. Well, this is actually, this is sheriff explaining it to the Senate President. But with the continued reductions in the budget, this is no longer the case. And then I think the... So I... In talking with her office, there is no other state funding now. Well, actually, it's the month of August, so nothing much goes on in the State House in the month of August anyway, so they tell me. And so nothing will happen this month. There is a question of whether or not the sheriff even has the authority to impose a fee without any structure. Like, for instance, if the county were to put out an RFP for a vendor for ambulance services and he responded, then maybe it'd be as appropriate. But to just arbitrarily say that, I am charging you this, we're not sure that that's even a possibility. So what I'm going... So I talked to Mark as well and others. The bills that are currently in the State House are still just sitting there. There's been no movement on them. There's the one that would allow the register of deeds to collect an additional $10 on the fees that each county could use, however soft bit. We saw this as an opportunity to maybe use that money, which would almost equal the costs of the CME service for all the towns on the Cape, to be able to use that as a funding source. That bill is still sitting there. And then there's another bill where the state would provide monies to the district. And we're District 5. And District 5 would receive funding from the state to provide this service. And that's still sitting there, too. So nothing is happening. So I'm going to suggest that we form a small working group made up of Chief Russell, Mark Zylinski, the finance director at the hospital, Mike...
I'm sorry, who?
Mike at the hospital. I can't think of his last name. He's a finance director for the hospital. But he's the one who's been... Yeah, Cape Cod Hospital. He's been involved in this all along. And myself, and possibly a state rep, if that seems a feasible thing to do. And that we form this small working group and we work with... And we get the sheriff on board when he's back from vacation. And we try to work this through and see what we can do over the next couple of months. And the... Our legislative delegation, Cleon has the bill also that's still pending. So I think we're going to have to do something. And we're going to come down to the wire on October the 1st if something doesn't happen. So that's what I would ask. I would make a motion that we form a working group of stakeholders that can deal with this issue and report back in three weeks.
Yeah, and I do second that. And I also think, you know, since Cleon has already filed his legislation, it probably would be the likely choice if he was going to be on there. And do we have a copy of that legislation?
We have copies of it. I don't have them with me. No, I have copies of them, but I didn't have them.
Yeah, if it's been sent to me, I'll look for it. But if it hasn't, I just like to see a copy.
I'll get... But I... I'm flogging for doing that.
Although it's important, I think that's putting it on there. I think the David Viera has been in the press several times.
Yeah, he... Well, he... When the delegation has attended the meetings, he's been very vocal on... Let me just say what... The Senate President, along with her colleagues in the Cape Legislative Delegation, have been working to assist the sheriff with funding. And the President... Senate President secured the $100,000 to offset a portion of the cost. And Cape Cod Healthcare contributed $50,000 for two years, each year, twice. So the sheriff has determined that these will cover CME until September. Well, the end of September. Should another funding source not be found, the sheriff's department wants to charge the fee. So the Senate President will continue to work to find a solution that works for everybody. And her office has agreed to also participate in our committee. And so they just want us to be aware of it, and they will work with us, so.
Question on the motion. Do you want, Pat, because you... Do you want me to list in your motion the people that you suggested? Chief Russell, Mark Zylinski, finance officer at the hospital, Mike, fill in the blank?
And others.
And others.
And others, yeah.
So list that. And when you say you want...
But those will be the principal. And the sheriff.
And the sheriff, okay, that's what I wasn't clear about.
Yeah, please include the sheriff.
And then you want to report back in...
In a month, 30 days, yeah.
Okay.
Three weeks, so...
So it's important that be included as an agenda item at that time.
Yeah.
30-day...
Well, whenever our...
First meeting is September 7.
First meeting is September, we'll have a report.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, I think that that's an appropriate way to handle it. Without any further discussion, who is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Members to include, but not elements to include.
At this time, it's time to address the commissioners' actions. And this would include the minutes of previous meetings and the review and award of bids, the approval of warrants and payroll, approval of personnel matters, approval of interstate travel requests, approval of contracts and amendments, approval of prepayment and payment authorizations, approval of department budget transfers and/or fund transfers, and ratify the action of the county administrator and system county administrator. And I read all of those because we are going through a process of evaluating open leading law requirements. And I have a draft from Attorney Troy, which is still under discussion. I believe we need to get input from Mark. Okay, so until we hear from Mark, the draft is still in process. And when the draft is finalized, I will share that with the rest of you when we get their marks included on it. So is there a motion to approve the...
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Can we name all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, leave your moment as well. Reports from individual commissioners, feel what?
Yes. I actually have been very busy. Yeah, I mean, I usually am, but I actually remember things that I've done this past week, probably not that far back. I know I've done a couple of other... I've attended a few other things. However, this Saturday, there was a dedication of the community garden in Wellfleet. And we were actually instrumental by granting a mere $7,000 to get that started. It's in the back of the Wellfleet COA Council of Aging. And they have this huge lot of land. They kind of beefed it up a bit and sold lots of 30. They broke it down by 20, 20 by 20s. And then some of them, they went 10 by 10. It is the most beautiful success in Wellfleet. And not only is it a success and people are now enjoying...
Behind COA, is it?
It's behind the COA. And really, this was the work of Celeste and John Makley. They are residents in Wellfleet who will be leaving soon, which is going to be a big loss to the town of Wellfleet. They've been great in many areas, but Celeste is the master gardener and has pushed this. However, the thing that has come of this, which we all sort of felt, but is an example, not only are people enjoying fresh food and vegetables in their own home, many of them, there's now a farmer's market from a lot of this garden on Wednesdays in Wellfleet. And economically, it is filling gaps for people that they did not... They were not able to fill economically on their own. So here is in Wellfleet. And here is an example of buy fresh, buy local, of not only is that buy fresh, buy local, and we are supporting, but this is really how we build economic development and sustainability, where we can produce our own within our own region and then consume it here where the money comes in. And plus, there's people, especially this time of year, coming in and buying these products and leaving that money and helping us build that economic development. So it's been... It has had so many different positive byproducts, other than the fresh products that it's producing, that it's been wonderful. And the great treat is, when we go on our tour of the outer Cape, we're having lunch there with much of the food with Bill Clark. So we're doing the outside. We're... I think Bill is focusing in on the community gardens that we supported. But Wellfleet's was really...
The $7,000 grant was from...
From the extension, the cooperative extension through, you know, to their master gardener program and the buy fresh, buy local program. So that is just a, you know, where a small amount of money can really have this great impact. And again, it was the effort, and I think that it's going to catch on. The other... You know, we've been working on the Tenium co-chair of the regional network to end homelessness. So we're working on the update of the 10-year plan to end homelessness. We're using the federal guidelines to guide us. So we look at youth and youth, families and children, veterans, we've included. We put in seniors, even though the federal government didn't ask that, only because it reflects our population. We have to start addressing... There is a big... There's something ahead of us that we have to start thinking about. Yeah, 34% over 55. And that doesn't count the others that are beyond that. So being the second oldest county in the nation, it is time to look at that. So... And we also... We didn't want to go in for self-defeat, so we've adjusted the name to be... To address homelessness, a 10-year plan to address homelessness and prevention as opposed to ending it. prevention, as opposed to ending. But, but what we also have done, and there's never been a lot of input, is the islands. And even though, like even CAC has their jurisdiction of the Cape and islands, the islands are sort of like the last mile of the open Cape. You know, you don't quite get it, get the funds or the attention you need. And Connie Textera, who is a volunteer in Wellfleet, started to see that there was a gap, that there were people becoming homeless, and the housing authorities there and their social services weren't really, like, what are you going to do about this? And when she started to understand that some of the assistance comes from this side, she started to attend our executive meetings and has really been a voice for the islands. So last week, I wasn't able to go, but they went to Nantucket and toured the human services, their prevention councils, and their housing. Yesterday, we spent the day on Martha's Vineyard and met with all of their housing authorities, their habitat, their human services. So we're incorporating their plans, and we're working in unison with what would be beneficial for them, even if it's legislation. You know, we've come up with the, with the, you know, we have to be proactive, and instead of just doing asks for, sometimes it's best for us to look at what exactly is it that's, that's preventing, sometimes it's just common sense, and there's a line in legislation that prevents certain collaboration or transfers. So we're going to take that on instead of looking at that legislation and maybe even, you know, recommend a legislation that could go forward, and that would be much more helpful, I'm sure, to legislators.
Many years ago, when I started out as a, on a housing authority, the real issue was to get public involvement from, let's say, not just from, you know, from the town, but also from organizations like, you know, like the local churches and civic organizations. And at that time, I had the good fortune of having Bart Murray as, you know, as part of that. So we were able to identify some property and to, you know, and save to move some of this forward. Unfortunately, the models that were created then, which were successful, have sort of gone by. And it would be useful if we could incorporate those models back in here. The other thing I'm very concerned with, as you're looking at the issue of homelessness, is the increase in the amount of what I would call older adolescents and young adults that, you know, that are adding to that population. And although it's important to look at people my age, it's, and also, we have to do something about this, you know, this.
There is a subcommittee that we, we, I took on the seniors because that's sort of my background, but there is a subcommittee that looked specifically between 18 and 24. And that is a huge emerging population, not only here, but on the islands as well. So that is definitely being looked at, being addressed. We're looking at recommendations going forward, and how can we do this? Here on the Cape, what we have been the most successful with is the prevention. A little bit of prevention can stop someone from being homeless. Sometimes it's just that month's rent.
That's what Bart Murray has maintained for years.
And it is, and he's absolutely right, and, and we do it well here. So that is always our mantra going forward. Give us the prevention dollars and don't restrict us in just having to use these for people who are already in that situation. So that's, that's really the arguments that we're, we're putting forward. It's been a great working group. Everyone's really working well together, and we should have that finalized by September, and I'll have a presentation with Beth and, and that sort of thing. The other thing, and they're going to be talking about funding today, and Marsha left, but they're going to be talking about giving a grant to the council on churches. And I was speaking with Beth, and, you know, every time, and I think this should apply even to the grant that we proposed to do the study for herbicides, that we have a regular update, that we just don't give money and say, you know what, you do have great statistics and you do great, do great things. All of the monies that we've, we've administered, like through the regional network, we were the pass-through, you know, the monetary pass-through for that, everything was accounted for. All of the money was, every dollar that was spent, we can tell exactly how many clients, who, in, without being disclosure, we even know who those clients were. So I think, if I don't make it to the assembly today, I would just recommend to them that, yes, I think, you know, it's not up to us to tell them who can get this money or who can't, but if they don't do it, if it comes here, I think we should talk about how it's.
We have a protocol that, you know, it's been set in place that any money that goes out of here for grants has a piece that has a contract.
Right.
You know, that's attached to it. And I can't imagine that we would approve anything.
Right.
That, you know, that would not have language that required reporting. Now, not all programs are successful, but all programs can certainly report to what they tried to do in order to be successful.
Absolutely. And they do, the reason I, I do like that request is that it's a regional, it's a regional effort. And these are things that we should take into consideration if we're giving money. Is it really part of our policies? But this is a grant, you know, this is a request for, for, for regional and many volunteers and, and I'm talking about, this is money going to the overnights of hospitality. That's what Marsha came forward.
The question for them is, we had moved away from being a grant organization. We've spent a lot of time and energy developing a human service advisory group that basically is on notice that we are not giving grants because we don't have any money in our budget to do that. So the question becomes, if we, if they do this and are establishing this precedent, what happens next year?
That's absolutely, that has been the point, that has been made. And I think that the assembly even, those who have history with the assembly, you know, not the new members, understand that, even the person who put forward this ordinance. She recognizes that. You know, they have to take that into consideration and how they're going to do this. And then, and even more reason why they should have parameters and, like, certain, certain requirements built into these things, because it's not just saying, here, here's, okay, you know, buddy, have you got a dime? Yeah, I have a dime. Yeah, I need it for a sandwich.
We're not a charitable foundation. We are, we are responsible for, having fiduciary responsibility for taxpayer money. So we are not, we do not have the authority to, to say, you know, let's say, to grant gifts.
Exactly.
We have the responsibility of serving safety net issues as, as much as we can, in my opinion, as well as making sure that money that we spend is on programs that we have gone through due diligence or budget process and represent our ability to support it, as well as our responsibility to support the programs that, you know, that we put forward as part of our budget, which represents the policy that we made in these things. But having said all of that, I guess we'll, we'll listen to what they have to say.
That's what I have to say. And I, and I agree with you. You know, the advisory council does have mixed feelings on this, because, you know, they, every one of them have worthy causes, and every one of them could use any type of money. And so there is, there is that question. And I do think that, you know, when, when the assembly is, you know, presented with these requests, they should take in the nature of it, if, you know, before they just say, sure, that sounds like a good thing, and you feel good by doing it, does it have, does it, does it meet the mission? And does it meet the regional mission?
More importantly, we have very limited reserves.
Limited reserves, and we cannot, I agree with you.
And to establish a precedent of dipping into those reserves is very problematic.
I absolutely agree with you.
As we carry on going forward. We, we have an operation to run.
Right.
And I wouldn't want to, let's see, want to face an issue where we had to stop somebody's employment because we were, you know, we were promoting a worthy cause.
Right, I absolutely agree. And that will come back to us, so we can have that discussion done as well.
Sure.
I just wanted to add something, because I went to that finance committee hearing, and I have for a long time been concerned about singling out one program.
Right.
But I kind of changed my mind, because around the, around, I hear from all the, it's a volunteer program, basically, where the churches take in people overnight. And it's been so successful in changing the minds of people about who the homeless are. And they have been quite successful, limitedly, but in finding other resources for them. So I, in my head, I thought the specialness of this program makes it more fundable. And to be truthful, Diane hasn't asked for money for any of the other very good programs that the council does. And because of its repercussions, I changed my mind. I'm just throwing this out.
George, thank you very much, but I will remind you that there's infinite need and only finite resources.
I absolutely know.
Yes, right. I know, it's a conflict.
But they also come and meet with us during our budget cycle.
Yes.
Because we do find a portion of what they do. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say.
Do you have anything else?
I was going to report.
No.
Keep it up.
Yeah, so thanks. I, I, yeah, I am very busy, but, you know, and when I remember what the heck I'm doing, I'm happy to report.
You do it all from Wellfleet.
I do it, well, this, yeah, this summer, it's been a lot of my.
Well, I just wanted to mention that Bill and I attended the American, American graduation.
I had a meeting that morning.
Yes, you were.
As the advisory council.
And we did tell them.
And we were trying, I was talking about this very issue.
And then we told them that that's where you were.
And it was really very well done, as usual. It was different this year because it was down at the.
Dennis Art Museum.
Yeah, down at Dennis, as opposed to the community college.
I thought it was better, because at the community college, we tend to be put into an auditorium, and there's not that opportunity to really have a lot of eye contact with people.
But they did, they did skits then, which I thought were very entertaining. And it was much longer when it was at college. It was on for like two to three hours. This was over. And actually, the Secretary Sullivan came and spoke.
Oh, excellent.
Which is, which was really very, he was down in the Cape, I know, for another reason.
Yeah.
And came down there to speak, which is nice. Yes, it was really very good. The other thing is, the regional conference is coming up September 1st.
Yes, and we have to fill this out, yes.
We should all attend that.
We're all signing up for it, I think.
And the other thing I wanted to think about, too, in terms of a county service when it comes to planning, is land use management. Because when you were talking about affordable housing, it reminded me how sometimes affordable housing groups, whether they're trusts or whatever they are, they're always out looking around for parcels of land and which to build in affordable housing, whatever it might be. Two houses, a duplex, five houses, whatever it is, an apartment building, whatever. And oftentimes, I don't think towns really necessarily look carefully at land use management in terms of what is around that parcel of land. And what is that, what is that going to look like in the future? And who are the people who are going to live there? Because I'm thinking of a project that's, that would probably, in the town where I live, that would probably end up having maybe 40, there would be families living there that could easily, in the aggregate, have 40 children, 40 small children living there. And if you look at the land that surrounds some of these projects, it could be industrial land. And if that industrial land, what is that industrial land going to look like in 20 years? And, and the intersections, you know, that's what I'm thinking of land use. What are the intersections? If it's in a busy area, is it a heavily used road? Are these intersections really congested? How safe is it for children to be able to live in that area with that kind of development and with that kind of traffic, congested traffic? So that's just an example, but I, I think about the fact that we really need to be looking at land use management as well when these projects get built. And maybe other towns, maybe towns are really doing it.
Well, I know Howard.
Do you know?
Well, Howard, we just completed a project, and that was a question as to whether or not the sighting of the last project, which is at the end of, at the end of Main Street Extension, next to a nursing home, but on the, on beside it, has been identified as an industrial area. But it leads into a small residential area, and then there's a cemetery, and then there's that intersection you're talking about. But as we look at these GIS mapping projects at the Cape Cod Commission.
Right.
Perhaps we need to talk to the housing consortium to find out whether or not they're taking advantage of what you're just saying, is to, because the land that the town owns tends to be contiguous to industrial areas, that we have to look at, look at multifamily housing with regards to the fact that it is family housing. However.
Yeah.
There's an underserved need, and that is single-room occupancy housing. We have, as far as, I think you've seen us.
Or a harvest, or rent.
Huge.
We really need.
The housing authorities are responsible for low-income rental housing only. The affordable housing committees in the towns are the ones that provide either ownership or, you know, renting opportunities. But the, the thing is that there are, some of these properties you're talking about are very appropriate for single adults who need housing, but not appropriate for family housing. So we need to look at that. When you brought up the, you know, when I brought up the, you know, the young adults and who seem to be homeless because of addiction issues, one of the problems of integrating young adults into elderly housing has been the fact that DPH and DMH do not send people to provide supervision for these recovering addicts.
It's the case management component that's huge.
And, and I've always resisted having that integration, because unless the protection was provided, then, you know, then we're putting frail elders at risk who are holding some of these properties. But I think that what we need to do is, when you're at the Cape Cod Commission, is to ask them to, to see whether or not they could integrate their planning piece into, you know, into the inclusion of these, because I think that's an excellent idea.
If I may, that, it is, if you're part of the local comprehensive plan, part of the local comprehensive plan, every town has to file a local comprehensive plan.
Right.
And some towns have been held up because of the land vision use map.
Right.
And that is where the commission has been going in, helping them do their GIS. So they, they are already doing that. And I know that that's what held up the town of Bourne, and, you know, because they're split into like three different sections between canals and bridges and.
That's true.
They, they submitted one section, because that, that was the one that they could really deal with, and it had something to do with economic development. But I, I worked, that's how I got into this whole thing of county government, by working on our local comprehensive plan back in 2006, 2007. And that was what started to emerge for me. Like, you know, if you have this map and you start looking at where things could go, and that's where we sort of identified areas where open Cape could be rebuilt if it wanted to, and if it was going to be rebuilt, you know, if we were ever getting funding to, to get a new facility, where would be the best place for that to be, these types of things. So, because they put the COA up in, up on this area that's up in the woods, which.
Yeah, I remember, brought me up there.
Yeah, and it's like, you know, for an older person, nighttime, is this the best place?
Yeah.
So, or if there was an emergency, you know, for an ambulance to get there. So those things, that sort of spurred all of that. But there is that component. So you might want to ask, when Paul has to come in and give an update, that he can talk about how that's incorporated into their, they're, they're pushing towns to do such issues.
But in any way, the executive committee meetings, whether you could raise.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I do. Well, I mean, the thing, it isn't always a requirement for a referral to the commission, I'm thinking.
That's right, yeah.
And some of it's done under 40B, so there's no requirement at all.
Right, right.
But the question is, I think, if towns were really aware of it, because sometimes they just look at the boundaries of a project and don't think beyond it.
I know.
And say, oh, here's a spot, man, let's put something here.
Advocates are just interested in putting housing someplace.
Yeah.
And for example, in Howard, to give you an example, there was a kind of a, an agreement that once Pine, let's see, Pine Oaks Extension was completed, that we would stop looking at Oak Street, although there was some more property down there. So every time, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee raises that, then there's the group from Oak Street that basically come up and said, we have a deal.
Right.
So although there's no, let's see, there's no authority for one Board of Selectmen to bind another Board of Selectmen, there is the memory of that neighborhood that keeps reminding Boards of Selectmen not to come down to that neighborhood. And I've talked to the Affordable Housing Committee and said, look, I said, the housing authority is supporting progress when we got to, you know, when we got to rental housing, but we know how much resistance we'd get if we continued to pursue that particular parcel. Let's exhaust all the other ones.
Right.
So there does need to be the piece where, as you talk to the town, to talk to the housing authority people and the Affordable Housing Committees, to make sure that they're aware of this particular issue.
And the planning boards.
And the, yes, because you do, look, the whole thing of the commission, we're getting, we're getting off the subject, but the commission is, you know, what they're trying to help people do is to really focus on getting the infrastructure more close and more dense, so that if there is anything like sewer ring or any of these needs that we have, energy needs, it's more concentrated and we can meet those, and you have more open space. So it makes sense for towns to look at, if they're doing some sort of housing, is it accessible? Is there walkways to villages, to services, to, you know, grocery stores and restaurants, post office? So those are things that they should take into account, because it's all about the planning. If we don't take those things into consideration and have zoning go along with it, we could be looking like Route One, you know? And that's, and I think that the commission. And that's, and I think that the Commission being here for all its good and bad of the past has kept us from being a total Route One, even in spite of what everybody wants to say. And I think that now that they've really wrapped their arms around that mission and, and that charge, they're much more effective in it.
And the last thing I might, is, Mark mentioned, when I spoke to him, when I was talking about CMed yesterday, that we don't have a meeting next week, is that?
No.
Okay. So then on the 17th, our meeting is, is the tour and at Nauset.
Where are we meeting now to start the tour, here?
Orleans Stop and Shop.
Orleans Stop and Shop?
Yep.
Okay, is that where we're starting?
Oh, Orleans Stop and Shop.
Am I right?
Across from the Orleans Inn.
I thought it was stopping here for, I thought it was also stopping here, but I will send an email.
It might, for some.
I thought it was stopping here. Well, I was going to just drive to Orleans because then we have to go to Nauset anyway. So when the bus comes back, we're further along.
For those who are going to go to that meeting, any delegates, he was doing it for delegates and those sort of things.
You have typically then convened your meeting at the gazebo at 3:30.
At the gazebo.
And, but I will confirm this, and signed your documents and done any other administrative things that you need to do.
Okay.
So that's what we have done in the past several years, is you've started at 3:30 and then you're, you wrap up yours.
You wrap it at 4:00 and.
And then you're there for the brief assembly meeting and then for John Olman's event.
Yes.
Bring lots of clips.
Then how about the 20?
Yeah, and we have to get rocks.
How about the 24th?
There is no meeting on the 24th.
Because Mark is going, Mark Morse will have our report within the next couple of days. And I, I, I would like to see us take it up and really instead of waiting until African Labor Day.
Well, if, if that's the case.
Is there any reason why we can't meet on the 24th? Is there some way?
No reason, no reason that I, that I know of.
Because the next one.
Well, I, I think that what we need to do is, is have that report at hand.
Right.
Oh, we will have it in hand, probably within the next day or two.
Okay, so when we have it in hand, I think that we can make a decision as to whether, whether or when we should hear it. Now, we, if we have it in hand the next couple of days, we could hear it on the 17th.
That, that wouldn't be appropriate, not sitting at the gazebo. I don't think the setting.
Do you want to have a special meeting just?
I think I would.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, depending, if you want to.
Let's read.
To read it first, but hold the 24th out as a possibility.
I would, if I may ask, and I, if you do, I'm fine, obviously meeting George's decision the week of the 22nd. I'm, I'm actually on vacation. There is a Cape Cod Municipal Health Group meeting that I was going to update on you. So Mark may have to attend that in my absence, so.
Well, we could meet on a Thursday or a Tuesday.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, instead of a Wednesday.
Can you tell me, are you available the 23rd, 24th, and 25th in the morning so I can get some flexibility there and I'll let you know as soon as possible?
It would be nice, if not, we could move, we could maybe meet the, not on the 17th. Why are we not meeting on the 17th?
You are, 17 is your all-day event.
But we couldn't do another meeting on the 19th, just on specifically that if we don't.
We could.
Or could we, yeah.
Would you want to do that?
Yeah, I mean, it's an option.
Do you want to just meet on the 19th in the morning and?
The 19th?
The 19th.
The 19th is a Friday.
The 2nd, the 19th. Yeah, if we wanted him there though, I know he's not available that day. I know his schedule now because of the.
Do you want him here to present?
Town manager, I think we would want him there.
Why don't we find out?
He's on vacation though.
Why don't we find out if he's available?
So can you give me your availability, like we, we're back, go back to the other week? Can you give me your availability the week, the week of the 22nd? Does the 22nd, 3rd, or 24th work in the morning? And I will confirm Mark, Morris's schedule and nail this down.
The 24th, the 25th, and the 26th. I'm available in the morning, not the 22nd.
Okay, so you're available the 24th, the 25th.
The 25th and the 26th.
And the 26th in the AM. And what about the?
I'm available the 24th, the 25th, and the 26th.
Okay, Sheila?
Why don't, what am I thinking is happening on the 26th?
When's your daughter going to call?
It's the Friday before Labor Day weekend.
Oh, the next day?
Right, that's right.
Yeah, but I can do it in the morning.
All right.
I can do it in the morning on the 26th.
So why don't I give them these three dates and I just need some parameters. It would be a 9:00 AM start and I, this is, we're going to suspend your rules. You're not doing public comment, you're not doing anything else. You're meeting specifically.
Right.
Just to have a presentation, a review and discussion on this report. And so there's no public comment, there'll be no needs action folder or anything like that because it's already been voted.
Right, right.
Done. It's just a, a meeting with the consultant to review the draft report.
To review the draft report.
And, yeah, it means you will have received it and have had the opportunity to have read it. So I need to make sure that you get it in a way that facilitates that.
Okay.
That's done.
Does that meeting get televised?
I would say, I don't know.
Let's, let's, let's see.
It's a draft document, so.
It's a draft document.
I would wait until you have your final document.
Till we have it in our hand and receive it.
Right, and then you present it to it because you may make changes.
That's true.
I, I mean, you could, in theory, draft documents are not public documents, but until they are finalized, they are working documents. So I would say no, but that's the Commissioner's decision, not mine.
And that's going to be at 9:00 o'clock?
9:00 on one of those things.
Decide that as we get closer.
I'll let you know.
Because we're not even sure that that's a firm date yet.
Right. And, um.
Did you have any news?
Okay, no, I'm, I'm done.
So at 9:00 AM, just that agenda item, and I will confirm all of those things with Mark Morse directly myself.
Okay, what I have, I, I told you that I put together a report on, on what happened at NACO.
Yes, I read it.
I've given you that report.
Yes.
And if you have any questions as far as details, you know, it's available and available for questions. The, I attended as the Cape Cod Regional Transportation Authority presentation on the change of contractors. And I must say that Tom Caher did a wonderful job as far as due diligence and outlining the, you know, the reasons for his management decision. While he has absolute authority with regard to making a decision, he was very concerned that the board was aware of, of his process that went through. And I would say that he did an excellent job of identifying how he'd come to the, how he'd come to the decision. And he had used the process of looking at the administrative requirements, the technical competency, and then, you know, and then the value of the contract, all of which were in favor of the, of the choice that he had made. On, let's see, we, one other thing. See, but that was on today's, today's the 3rd, right? Oh, there is a, I was responsible for doing Mark's review, July 1st. I started that process. I had, I had a meeting with him on, yesterday, where we went over, we went over it. He's now pulling that together and we will, I will have that, I will have that available shortly. And when I do that, I will be asking you for your input with regard to that particular.
Actually, Bill, since you brought that up, if I may, you have two, you'll need to, you'll finish up Mark's, which was July, and then the processes to have him come in, that's then discussed in open session. So that can be done on your September 21st meeting. And you also then need to begin Paul's, which is in September, and schedule that one for your first meeting in October if that, so I can get this on both of their schedules.
Okay, then I think I need to meet with Paul as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
In September, you would need, I can set, have a date set. So you need to meet with him in September, prepare it, and then have him, then have the public presentation in October. Mark's presentation should occur in September.
Is that close to his anniversary?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could, if you could remind me by email.
Sure, I will take care of that. I will copy both of you and I will see, confirm that Mark will be here on the 3rd Wednesday, the 21st, so you can do his public presentation. And then Paul's maybe either the, the 1st Wednesday in October or the 2nd Wednesday in October, whatever his schedule allows.
And then, let's see, oh, there is a, let's see, I told you, oh, there was an issue that was brought up at the Family Advisory, Patient Family Advisory Committee that I serve on over at the hospital. Duffy has lost their psychiatrist and we have great concern about that because now the medication management is now falls to the emergency room. And there's some question that had been raised with regard to the supervision of the nurse practitioners who must have a psychiatrist in place in order to manage that. This is an issue that's also been brought up by Baybridge, which is a, which is a fountain house model, clubhouse for folks in the Hyannis. They're very concerned about losing this resource. And I know they're going after Duffy. So I wonder if you'd be kind enough to find a, if your intention is.
What your status is and how they're going to handle that? I will do that.
I can tell you, the, the lack of psychiatrists at Cape Cod is huge.
Oh, I know that.
And it's a really, really big problem because the, the suicide coalition, they, they express grave concerns about, about the unavailability of psychiatrists. And then, of course, they, they're, some of those clinics were closed by Cape Cod Hospital. So it really is, it's a big problem.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I'm, I'm bringing this up in, in public because I want the public to be aware that, you know, this is something we're concerned about and that we're trying to find out as much as we can. So with that, that's, and you have, if you have any questions on the, on the NACO report, the only thing I would bring up in, in public again is that although I did not get the, the kind of support that I was looking for with regard to pesticide use under House, to oppose House Bill 872, it becomes a continuing issue with regard to the people that have come forward and have expressed concern about that. And that's probably my main motivation in supporting, you know, more progress on the, on what the Cape Cod Commission is proposing with regard to the 4.1 plan.
Okay, you mentioned Duffy and I'm trying to find it here. I got a notice from a list group to pass on to you because they haven't got exactly the date, but towards the end of August, hopefully it's on the 26th. They want to have a legislative breakfast and they just wanted me to give you a heads up on that, so as soon as that comes out, it will get sent around.
And speaking of that, we have this other writing that's coming up with regard to September 1st.
Yes, so just fill this out before you.
I just did mine.
Julie gave me hers. If Pat and Bill could just take a minute before you leave.
Right.
And complete that, that would be great.
Okay, I, that's all I have. Do you have a report from Mark?
I do now have a report from Mark. I just wanted to look at the two, three items that I had. We addressed two of them already relative to your responsibilities for performance evaluations. And then the third is I just wanted to let you know that Cape Cod Municipal Health Group will be meeting quite regularly as we look to revise our health plans consistent, consistent with the changes that were passed by the legislature through the budget process. So we will be bringing updates back to you throughout the fall. So we have a series of meetings coming up almost all fall. And I will.
I need to find out what are considered to be elective surgeries.
You would check your existing plan and go and ask them then.
And for people who are covered by.
If you're covered by Harvard Pilgrim, you know, PPO, you should.
Blue Shield.
Blue Shield, you should stop in and talk to Robin. Or you can email them.